Okay, good evening, welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for August 3rd, 2015, regularly scheduled meeting. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Second item that we have is approval of meeting minutes for July 27th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve those minutes.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. The next item that we have is invitation to speak. Is there anyone in the audience? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that I came down tonight was basically to follow up on a correspondence that I did send to the board. I don't know if you have— I assume you all received it. I do have copies if you need one.
Was that regarding the no trespassing?
It was regarding the quarries and the no trespassing.
Yes, yes, I got that. Did you guys get that?
I did.
Yeah, we all got that.
Okay.
And we got the chief's response also.
Okay, as did I. As I said in my correspondence, the quarries, including the one in question, are part of, as you all know—I'm not telling you anything you don't already know—are part of the history and heritage of this town. They have contributed significantly to the development of this town, and I believe that we should try to preserve them intact to the extent that we can. We are using up very quickly any open space that we have left in this town, so the available space for recreation is quickly vanishing on us. And I believe that we need to do everything we can, including saving the quarries, to preserve as much open space for recreation as we can. I did get the chief's response, and I have a couple of comments regarding his response. It seems to me that the chief was saying that in order—he—that, first of all, he cannot order the placement of no trespassing signs and then also be the enforcing authority. He can only be the enforcing authority if someone else, some other entity, orders the placement of the no trespassing signs, which I believe would be your board. That's what I gleaned from the chief's response. He also, I think, said that he cannot enforce removing trespassers from any—from either the quarries or any public building or any private property, for that matter, unless it is properly posted with a no trespassing sign, or—and this is critical—or the trespassers have been notified once before not to go onto the property. And I believe that's an important point. I'm concerned about that because, on numerous occasions over the years, the police—maybe not under the current chief's tenure—but the police have, on numerous occasions, removed people, swimmers, from the quarries without no trespassing signs being placed there. It seemed to me, in listening to your discussion, your board's discussion, that the critical item that concerned you the most was the swimming in the quarries. That's what was my take on it. And I believe in order to curb that, you agreed that no trespassing signs needed to be placed. My concern was that those quarries and the trails around the quarries are used for walking and hiking by many residents, and it would be a shame to stop that with no trespassing signs for the sake of stopping swimmers. Not that I agree that swimming should be stopped at the quarries. My suggestion was to place no swimming signs, if that is your intent, and not to place the no trespassing signs. This would allow residents of Milford who enjoy hiking and walking and don't necessarily want to walk on the paved rail trail and would rather, let's say, rough it a little more, walk the trails in and around the quarry without fear of violating a no trespassing sign. The chief seemed to think that this would not be a viable solution. If, in fact, we did that—or you'd ordered that—that the no swimming signs be placed there instead of the no trespassing signs, this would not be an unprecedented move on your part. For example, Milford Town Park, it is clearly posted positively no dogs allowed, as opposed to no trespass. If we continued along the same vein as your thoughts, I believe, of placing no trespassing signs around the quarry, then we should place no trespassing signs at the town park to stop dog walkers from going into the park. I'm not sure—I'm being a little facetious here because I know that doesn't make sense, and I think you know that probably doesn't make sense. My point is, I think we need to place the appropriate signage to address the perceived problem that you see and not just a general arbitrary "nobody go here because we don't want some people doing this." And that was what I tried to get across in my correspondence to you. To get back to the swimming for a second. The quarries have been used for swimming for generations, and, yes, there have been incidents there, but there have been incidents in other swimming facilities also. I know that many Milford residents learned to swim at the quarry, and I know that that's where I learned. Now, I fine-tuned my skills, swimming skills, if you will, as much as they can be, at the feno pool, under the supervision and direction of Senator Burtonozzi, who at that time was a lifeguard swim instructor at the feno pool. So he, if you will, maybe showed me, you know, the correct way to, you know, do a breaststroke and a backstroke and that type of thing. But my actual, you know, swimming, stay alive, don't sink to the bottom, happened at the ledge, which is what the quarries were commonly referred to back in the day. I can remember many nights like we have out there tonight, hot, sweltering nights. Young kids, including myself—I don't want to say we had nothing to do, but with not much to do, no plans, let's head for the ledge, which we did, and took a nice, cool dip in crystal clear water to no one's detriment. One of our well-respected local art teachers back in the day was a strong advocate for art teacher at the school—was a strong advocate for swimming at the ledge, and routinely invited what I'll refer to as swim-ins with many of the local kids at the ledge. Granted, at that time, there were not many other places you could go and take a swim or a cool dip, so that was a—seemed like a good alternative. It was a great alternative, as a matter of fact. What I think is important is that—I don't—I would like not to see the trails in the area around the quarries be off limits to the local residents. And if you're adamant about the no swimming, then I still believe that we can post the no swimming signs, and I believe that the police department can, in fact—which they, over the years, have done on many occasions—cleared out the quarries from swimmers when they are aware of them being there. Like many other decisions that are made, there are, let's say, unintended consequences or collateral damage. My understanding is that either the Historical Commission or members of periodically conduct tours of the various quarries around town, which are very educational, and they help some of the younger generation understand the significance of the quarries. If, in fact, once again, you are adamant about placing the no trespassing signs, then—if then, then—in order to be fair and equitable to everybody, it seems to me that you have no choice but to order that those tours stop because they will be trespassing. I believe one of the board members—it may have even been yourself, Mr. Chairman—suggested as a possibility of maybe filling in the quarry, which, in fact, would solve the problem forever, once and for all, but would have a disastrous effect on the ability for anybody to see physically what the quarry was, what some of our ancestors went through mining those huge stones. So whatever your decision is, and if, in fact, you do not decide to reconsider your decision to post a no trespassing signs, please do not fill them in, please. In any case, you gentlemen have far more important things to talk about than to listen to me, so if you have nothing for me or any questions, I will leave you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you for your thoughts. Is there anyone else at Jamie?
How's the video working today?
Take your time, take your time. Be careful.
Is that camera live today?
I guess, you know. We can only rely upon our technical people, and they say it's on, so I think—
Audio worked great last week anyhow, so that's great. I want to say thank you to Forty Pounds and Forty Days Radio for including almost all of the statement I made in the previous selectmen's meeting. I thought their coverage of my statement was very good. The coverage of the daily newspapers' version of my statement here, not so good. At no point did I say posting signs would absolve the town of liability, but that's just for me and the newspaper.
Bill's right there, so if you've got any bonds, you can pick it up with him right there.
I'm just letting him know that I did not say anything about absolving the town of liability, and I appreciate that the radio station just let me speak for myself. I thought that worked great. I also want to commend the radio station for dealing with the issue of the quality of the minutes in town, an issue that I've been interested in for about two years when I spoke to Rick Vilani about one of the committees in town that hadn't posted their minutes online in over nine months. And I also said that the minutes of many committees look more like agenda bullet points than minutes of meetings. He was non-pulsed by my comments, but the committee that hadn't posted their minutes for nine months did actually step up and post the backlog of minutes. So hooray for somebody else paying attention to the quality of the minutes. I want to speak tonight about changing the no trespassing signs to no swimming signs. My family visits the numerous quarries in town approximately six times a year, trying to visit during each season. My family cherishes the multiple aspects of the quarry, from the moonscape-like appearance of the enormous waste pile to the towering mountain of rocks that has a wonderful plateau on the top. We enjoy the full range of the graffiti, from the simple beginner work to the X-rated stuff to the beautiful stencil artwork that is all over the quarries. It's an overreaction to post no trespassing signs at the quarry, preventing all of the interested citizens from being able to visit there freely. Terrible, terrible idea. And the hypocrisy of saying, "We can break this rule," because really, they don't mean we can't walk there, or, you know, just the awkward situation of, "What is the lesson?" You're teaching people when—if you choose to go there because you want to go there, even if it's posted. Or is the town really going to prevent every walker from walking there? That's an interesting dilemma I'm thinking about. I want to speak in opposition to the idea of filling the quarries. Please, let's not be the easy solution to the developer around the corner's problem of what to do with his enormous fill problem. I'm not interested in being the solution to that guy's problem. The quarries are way too interesting, and filling the quarries—the amount of liabilities that just are in walking around the woods are so crazy, I'm like, yes, you won't drown after the quarries are filled, but it's all dangerous back there. And I've run out of prepared statement, but I just want to say that I think the other towns in Massachusetts that have Swim at Your Own Risk at places where the towns know people swim unsupervised, I don't think that the people who run those towns are dim-witted people who don't care about the fiscal responsibility of the towns that they are part of. I think they manage their swimming situation and their budget situations both. Like Mr. Buckley said, Dennis and Wellfleet have tons and tons of swimming with no lifeguards, and they are not recklessly unconcerned about their liability issues. Mr. Murray said that his interpretation of the liability was, "If you're aware of a liability, then you're liable for a liability," something to that effect. I'm sorry if it's a bad paraphrase.
Not quite, but I'll let it go.
If you want to correct me, I've—
I don't.
Okay, well, you said something about, "If you're aware of a known liability and you don't do something about it, you're in trouble for it," is my paraphrasing of it. And I think that's a dramatic oversimplification of what's involved at Swim at Your Own Risk because I don't think the numerous towns across the state that have Swim at Your Own Risk are jeopardizing their fiscal stability while allowing Swim at Your Own Risk. I would encourage the town council to spend—to avoid taking the simple solution to this liability issue, which obviously would be filling in the quarry and not thinking about liability issues. I would encourage the town council to carefully understand how other towns successfully manage their risk and not encourage any other town employees like Vonny or Larry to spend a lot of energy on arranging or figuring out what's involved in arranging getting 300 loads of rock and fill to the quarry in a future date until the town council says, "Absolutely, we're under tremendous risk of liability for this, and no quality of lawyering can get us out of a terrible lawsuit." Because actually, I don't think that's the case. I think that careful lawyering will mitigate the financial risk of what could happen there. There's probably a handful of more things I could say, but mostly, I want to say it will be very short-sighted if 2015 and this gang of selectmen is the people who decided to fill in the quarries to protect us from ourselves. Save the quarries, let people enjoy the entire aspect of the quarries. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on any issues? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to our scheduled appointments. The first one is TGI Fridays, Inc., DBA TGI Fridays regarding a change of shareholders. And while Attorney DeNapoli gets seated, we'll read the notice of public hearing. The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that has received a letter from the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Commission, the ABCC, as part of a multi-unit filing notifying the town that TGI Fridays, Inc., the licensee, has applied and been approved for a change of shareholders. Alcoholic beverage restaurant license issued to the premises known as TGI Fridays, Inc., DBA TGA Fridays, 240 Fortune Boulevard in Milford. Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 138 as amended, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on said application on Monday, August 3rd, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in Room 3 of the Milford Town Hall. We have correspondence from Ralph Sacramone, the executive director at the ABCC. We have our department head review form indicating the building commissioner states that it's in the IC zone, which is an allowable use. The occupant load is 176. The building and restrooms are handicap accessible. The town planner has indicated there is no change of actual use. The tax collector, town treasurer have no issues, as do the fire chief and the police chief. And with that, I will turn it over to Attorney DeNapoli. How are you?
My thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Good to see you.
Good to see you again, too. Welcome to the board. Nice to see you all. This is rather a simple matter, I think, in the sense that instead of going to the local boards first, this is something that the ABCC approves and sends it to local boards down as an inverse type of application process. These corporate shareholders that have been done nationally, internationally, changed, so it has really no effect on the day-to-day operations in the town of Milford or any other, really, local stores. The managers all stay the same, the directors have stayed the same in the corporation. It's just a change of shareholders. But for the process, we need to get it approved, so.
Sure, and no, I don't have any questions. We've done similar actions as a board before, when it's gone to the ABCC ahead of time. You're in good standing, so I have no questions.
Will?
No, no questions. Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the license—I'm sorry—the application for a change of shareholders.
Motion made and seconded to authorize approval, this being a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on the motion before it? Hearing nothing, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Nice to see you. You, too. The next item that we have is Richards Food &amp; Drink, Inc., regarding a change of DBA. And it looks like it's just a petition for a change of license. The licensee, Richard Food &amp; Drink, Inc., is changing the corporate DBA to—it was Maria's, and now the DBA is going to be Bison Burger. The department head review form indicates that the premises is in the CB zone, which is an allowable use. The occupant load being 130. The building is handicap accessible. The town planner has indicated no change in actual use. Bumper stops to be installed along an entire sidewalk adjacent to Route 109. The tax collector, the town treasurer have no issues, as the fire and police chief has no issues. So with that, is it Mr. Winchman?
Winchman, very good, thank you.
Winchman, good, okay. Turn it over to you, and would you like to tell us about this?
Pretty simple. As you probably know, I've been the licensee on this property for approximately 30 years, initially partners with my father, who's passed away. I believe I'm the sole shareholder on this property. We've enjoyed doing business in town. I think I'm one of the longest-standing liquor licenses in the town. I'm proud to say that we have had complete compliance with all of the alcohol checks that have been put, not only from the town, but also from state level. The building, as you well know, is a 60, 70-year-old restaurant. It's been restaurants before my family purchased it. We decided it was time to give it a nice freshing up. The Bison Burger concept is something that's been generated by myself and my family. It is a new concept that we've been tweaking and working in the town of Hopkinton for the last three years. We've had tremendous success and very nice reviews come back from the public concerning the concept, and we felt as though it was time to put, I guess what you call, together a proof of concept and move it into the property that we already own here in Milford.
So do you have a Bison Burger restaurant in Hopkinton?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay. Is this a franchise, or?
Well, it's my own concept—
Okay.
—that I've developed, and my children hope it's a franchise.
Oh, okay, all right, well, good. Could be a trendsetter here. So what's the difference between the restaurant that you want to go forward with and Maria's that had been there?
As you're probably aware, Maria's was a pretty much traditional Italian-American concept. I felt as though that we've done a very nice job in town and did traditional American-Italian food. A number of years ago, I kind of caught on to this new trend of—well, obviously, everybody's into the new trend of healthy eating, and at the same time, it's kind of an oxymoron, fast casual industry is very much into burgers and comfort foods. So it's an interesting blend of two things that have kind of collided into one. I'd say less than 10 years ago, Bison wasn't readily available to the public, and we can thank Mr. Ted Turner, who basically has repopulated the American Bison. And Ted's Montana Grill was probably the first successful Bison restaurant chain. There is one in Massachusetts. It does very well. I basically took that ball and decided to put my own spin on it. I felt as though that his restaurant was, one, a little too pricey and a little too formal of a restaurant, whereas I wanted to go more of like an American saloon-type feel, a little more casual. So basically, we offer an array of hand-pressed burgers that are done in either hamburger, Bison, salmon, or chicken, and pretty much it's—the reason why Bison's very popular right now is because it's actually the healthiest protein you can eat. It's actually healthier for you than chicken. There are absolutely no—because of the FDA, there's no chemicals or anything that go into the feed of Bison. Unfortunately, the downside is that Bison—ground Bison is probably a similar cost to regular steak in a per-pound situation. But a lot of people are using it as a healthy alternative to a guilty pleasure.
Good, thank you. I didn't know that. I appreciate the information. What's it taste like?
That's a—you have to come in and try.
Bison burger, how do you describe it?
Bison is—almost no fat—
Okay.
—whereas even high-quality beef, ground beef, is 20, 25% fat.
Oh, jeez, okay.
So it is denser, it is darker, but it is not as gamey as, say, duck or venison. So it's someplace in between the two.
Does it get dry?
If you don't cook it correctly, yes.
Okay.
It can. So that's—and I think that's probably why a lot of restaurants haven't headed in that direction, because it takes a fair amount of skill—
Yep.
—and you could have some pretty serious loss.
Okay, great.
With some pretty expensive product, so you've got to—you've got to train people how to cook it correctly.
Wow. Well, thank you. It was very enlightening. I wish you the best with your endeavor. Bill?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. They've been there for a great deal of time. They're in good standing. All the department heads have weighed in. No concerns coming from them. I've had the opportunity to have Bison before and found it tasty, and hope you do well.
Thank you.
Good. Will?
No, I'll just comment that you do very well in Hopkinton. I've been—
I've been there.
Oh, thank you.
It's actually quite convenient on the side of town that I live in as well. No, good luck.
Great. Entertain a motion.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the application for change of DBA to, from Maria's to Bison Burger.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck with everything. Next on the agenda is the Finance Director, along with the Town Treasurer. And we received a yearly management letter from Scanlon and Associates. So Zach.
Gentlemen, how you doing?
Kelly, Chris, Tom, come on up and.
How's it look?
Looks, looks, looks pretty good this year.
Yeah, I think so.
Very, very bare-bones report, which in your business is good.
That's right.
Yeah.
We worked really hard this year.
Yeah.
I wanted to take the opportunity quick to want to introduce Tom Scanlon Jr. He's the engagement partner for our outside independent auditing firm, Scanlon and Associates. I've had him for a number of years now. I also asked Chris Pillar, who started today, come to your first Selectmen meeting.
See you again.
Kelly fell into benefits coordinator, which he voted last week, effective today. A little bit of a meet and greet, as well as they're here to show their support.
Great. So do you want to run through it, or Zach, or however you'd like to handle it?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you take the lead?
I know it's been a couple of years since I've been here, so. Say, one new face on the board. I do want to just touch base on the financial end, because I think it's important. You know, the main objective of an audit is to apply on your financial statements, so it's a, it's a risk-based approach to your financial statements, to assess risk in the financial statements and design our procedures from there. The town did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get, which help you out in the bond market, users of your financial statements. We'll appreciate that, and that's from the hard work of your finance team. Couple of things jump out at me when we look at your financial statements is how much your reserves are. You have approximately about $84 million budget, and your two main reserves, which are your stabilization, your free cash. Your stabilization, which you have two of them, is just under $14 million, it's 13.8 million. And your free cash, that was certified at June 14, is 3.8.
Let me remind everyone that this is as of the end of 6/30/14.
14, yes, okay.
So with those two together, it's about 17.7 million. Has when the, users of your financially, the bond rating companies, when they look at you, they take a percentage based on your expense, your budget, of what your reserves are. A well-rated town, or adequate, it's between 10 and 15%, you're somewhere in the ballpark of 22% just on those two reserves. And I think that's very reflective in your financial statements. Couple other, I call them off-the-books reserves, which is your excess levy capacity, which is your ability to tax. At June of 14, that was about 1.4 million. So you're very healthy when it comes to using your financial statements, and I think that's always nice to point out, because I, we audit approximately about 75 communities, and we don't have that quite bit of a problem in other communities. So I think whatever you're doing, your financial philosophies and how well you're managed, really shows on your financial statements, and I think your users of them will see that as well. Couple other points. Your property taxes is your main revenue source in your general fund. We do a lot of work with collection rates, and you have a very healthy collection rate of about 97%, which is good to see. So I think that also should be pointed out.
So it's very reflective at the end of this fiscal year as well. I think we had a 2% uncollected, which is unbelievable.
Yeah, so you're doing, you're doing well. Another component of your, of your budget, when we look, your debt budget compared to is about 4%. Again, on just general terms, you're below average when that, especially with having that.
What would you consider average on that debt?
Five to six.
Okay.
Usually with communities, that's just a general thumb, depending if you have debt exclusions. But if you have no debt exclusions, you're approximately at 4%.
Okay.
Again, I mean, those are some of the things that jump out at me in your financial statements. So I think you should be proud of that fact.
Woodland is coming, though.
As always, you've got to invest in your infrastructure and your buildings, which you are doing as well, so.
You had a healthy clip.
Yeah. But your free cash and your reserves are staying there. I mean, if you look at your general fund, your general fund increased 3.2 million. That's because you put, your net increase in stabilization, about 2.2 million, your free cash jumped to about 1.4 million. So your, your financial philosophies are working.
Good, good. That's good to hear.
Yeah, that's always good to hear. I don't get to say that too many times. One component of an audit is a management letter. Again, it's more, we see, once we design our audit procedures, we see where you can make improvements. Again, we part of management finances, we put in the three buckets, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and other matters. First two, you never want a senior management letter, you do not have that here, just other matters. So it's things we feel like you can improve to get much of an operating maximum out of the staff. I kind of just want to go over on my, you know, we have two current-year ones, which are really just Gatsby pronouncements. The first one, Gatsby 68. Again, to achieve the unmodified opinion, you're going to have to implement Gatsby 68 in 2015. And all that is, is right now, you have an unfunded liability under your retirement system. Right now, it's no disclosed, so if you look at your financial statements, it's out back in the notes, still there, it's always been there. I think you're going to be funded 2032?
Actually, 37.
37.
Yeah.
So there's an unfunded liability there that you're paying on an annual basis. All that's doing is going from the notes, and now it's going to go on to your financial statements. So it's not going to make your financial statements, again, liability's going to go there, probably your net position's going to go into deficit. But you have a plan on funding that, so it's the difference between accounting and funding.
It's quite a complicated formula that even I'm struggling to fully understand right now, but it's rarely going to take an outside service of an actuary to come in and convert the data into something that can be placed into the balance sheet. It's, it's very complicated, and it's rarely going to fall under the jurisdiction of the Retirement Board. And obviously, I'm ex officio and chairman, so we've actively been discussing this, and we're gearing up to have it fully implemented.
And again, from our perspective, the reason why we're concerned with it is because now it goes on your financial statements, we have to apply your financials, so we have to have some sort of audit procedures to ensure that liability's correct. And right now, it's all about census data. We're going to test census data, and it's going to, hopefully, that will get us there. One of the problems we see is maybe a delay in issuing of your financial statements. As we get the census data, you got to hire an actuary, they get it, we got to test it. So that's about the only drawback I see going from this. I know Zach is on top of it.
It's seriously quite complicated. It might put you to sleep if we discuss it, but.
That's all it's doing from a concern, the liability has always been there, it's just been in your notes, now it's going to your financials. Any questions on that? That's good.
We're prepared, we're ready, we'll get it done.
The second kind of column we have is there's a new OMB circular out there, which OMB deals with federal grant funding, primarily relates to your school departments, and most of your federal funds come in. It's going to affect your school grants starting this September. There's a lot of complications within the OMB. I know Desi has been on top of it, met with the school business manager, has put out pronouncements. One of the main aspects of it is now your policies and your procedures have to be documented in writing. For instance, your procurement has to be in writing now, has to be documented, so. There's a few other compliance findings that you may see in your A133 finding, some compliance findings coming out of it. Our profession is anticipating, so we wanted to stay ahead of the barking dogs and kind of give all our clients kind of a word and say, hey, this is coming, get as much education you can on this new OMB circular. It's mainly affecting your school grants, that's where a majority of your funding's going to be. And that's it for the current-year findings. I think I don't want to spend too much time on the prior year findings, but you're dealing with them. The first two, I kind of want to pay particular attention to, is the reconciliation of the banks. Kind of had a turnover in Treasury Department over the last year, your bank reconciliations got behind. I thought Zach addressed the issue, went to weigh on it, and really didn't let it get up to a significant deficiency finding. You're rolling forward, I believe the bank recs are up to date.
We're up to date, we're wrapping up June right now, which is, it's not out of the ordinary to be one month behind, and we'll have that done and satisfied next week or so.
Just to be clear, we're talking about the findings that you observed in 2013?
Correct. And then followed up on them.
And it's a follow-up, a natural course of an audit?
Yep. So your treasurer's got big shoes to fill.
Nothing like first-day pressure.
That's right, there you go. And then the second one, the payroll withholdings. You can see the payroll for health insurance has been accumulating a balance. We did a lot more testing in that area this, this year, really trying to focus on why it was accumulating, kind of centralized on some issues. I know that Zach and, you know, financial personnel are going to deal with it going forward. I know adjustment, proposing adjustment for this coming up, I know you used a piece of it.
Correct, correct. We, we'll talk about this in a little more depth, but we did the premium holiday this year, and that was actually a claims trust that was hanging out there from a point of when we're self-insured. And after all remaining claims came in, we were able to deplete that, and simultaneously, we took a piece of this trust out as well that was basically a buildup. Now, that's more or less the quick fix. The task we have in front of us, which is why I asked both of these people to be here tonight, is to actually develop a formal reconciliation process where we can, at any given time, explain what that variance is. There's always a natural timing difference, there's, there's a lot of different factors that come in, come into play, and this goes hand-in-hand with the financial structure that we put together and went to town meeting a little while ago, where this hasn't been getting the proper attention. And now we're fully staffed, we have big expectations. I think everyone's been doing a great job. I think our team's been put together well, including Rick, who's been great with supporting us as well. And again, big expectations and move on, and we're going to get this thing done right.
And from an accounting standpoint, variances are variances. The fact that it's a positive variance is still significant, but I just want to be clear, it's a positive variance.
Yeah.
That means something different to me, and I'm not saying I'm not concerned with your, your, your report or what you're saying, I'm concerned, but.
Yeah, no, it's not a variance to the support documentation, it's a variance in the allocation between withholding and appropriation, it was building this surplus, call it.
Basically, when it comes down to it, at the end of the day, the general fund had picked up more money than it should have.
Right. From withholdings from the invoice.
Yes.
Yeah, it's something we've been looking at over a three-year period. We started in 2012, but originally allocated out to the teacher's summer withholding, because, you know, they're working, you're paying over 26, but you're taking out over 22, so at June 30, July and August, we'd be sitting there, try doing some testing. We know some jumps to 12 to 13. Kind of say, we took a bill out, allocated, they didn't really find anything in the census data to say, okay, it's this group that we're withholding incorrect, that's our first concern. And then this year, we kind of honed in on a group that, you know, I don't think these bills are being allocated right, and going forward, we're going to.
One thing I did want to make clear is that people's actual withholdings were appropriate. It's not like we over withheld from individuals from what it should be, that was appropriate.
Correct.
A lot of different factors go into it with mass teachers' retirement, our retirement, geriatric, and Kelly will tell you all about it, which is why our position's.
There's different percentage structures.
PPO, HMO.
Some of the plans are 50/50, some are 70/30.
Some 100% for surviving spouses, so I think it's been one of them situations that's been taken for granted for a long time, and we got to really tune down on that, and we're on it.
Good.
I agree with that. Now, the rest of the findings, I think, have all been kind of addressed. The self-insurance trust, that's more of like an accounting aspect that I think is being fully addressed. Again, premium holiday, the payroll reporting periods go into a 26, more than 52. And then revolving funds at the school department, there's 16 of them with a balance of approximately 900. It's really looking at those and say, are they true revolving funds to pay for the costs? You can build up revolving funds, because maybe like parking fees, you may be collecting something in front to have a paving five years from now, and that's your plan, that's acceptable, but really getting an eye on them and reviewing them.
Yeah, yeah, and I think one of the ways to do that is incorporate those capital plans into our existing capital plan.
Yep.
Right, so that when you concede those, you're less likely to ask questions about it, or to raise concern. So, you know, I've said at the time, if we say whether those revolving funds are allocations for capital, long-term plans, refurbishment of pools, gyms, whatever, then we get those in our rotating capital plan, then when you see a balance, we look to a corresponding line item in the capital plan and see, there it is.
Correct.
I think that's what's missing.
Yes, that's it.
It just says it's for future capital.
Correct.
But we should be able to show it in our future capital.
There should be a link somewhere, correct?
Yeah.
And I think that's all we're kind of saying in that.
I agree. I agree.
And I know, I know Zach and town members have been reviewing these balances in fiscal year 15.
Correct.
And the last one's Finance Director, which you passed, and I wish more towns would kind of do that, you know. It's important to have a Finance Director, one central place where all decisions, financial decisions are being made, one person the board can go to. So I think, it was good to see that you adopted that position.
Nice work by the team. I know that you're, you're going to be the first to say that it's as much a result of the department heads.
Definitely, definitely.
I think it's a lot of work.
The treasurer's office has done an outstanding job with being short-staffed, and I want to make sure that's recognized. And welcome aboard, Chris, again.
Buckle up.
Big expectations, and always got our eyes on efficiency, effectiveness, and we're going to get it done.
Yeah, no, this was, I think, one of the smallest, if not the smallest, audits that I've seen in the 15 years I've been here, and that's a good thing. So I want to thank you for everything you did. Will, did you have any comments or questions?
No, we chatted a few minutes before the meeting started. After nine years on the school committee, I remember dealing with your father, and, and a lot of it obviously looks very much the, much the same in the topics and stuff, so no, no questions, thank you.
And, and we are here doing work, we're just, it may not look like, you know, smaller, but we are here doing testing, and, you know, we, we do feel like an audit is a year-round process, we're not just here for two weeks and have a report, we encourage phone calls, encourage work with the client. So if you ever have issues as a board that comes up, don't hesitate to call the office.
And I definitely jump on the phone and, at times, and they're always there, so it's, I appreciate having that, that voice there, and secondary recommendations, and they're always been great.
Tell me, how's your father doing?
Doing good, he still yells at us.
Oh, okay.
Is he still dead?
Yeah, we're concerned, we doesn't yell.
Does he, does he come into the office?
Every morning, has his coffee and muffin, then he grumbles and leaves.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, give him, give him our regards, he's a great guy.
Definitely will, thanks.
Okay, Bill, you all set with everything on that?
Yeah, outstanding work.
Okay, Zach, Chris, Kelly, Tom, thank you.
No problem.
Good work.
Good night.
You, too. All right, that concludes our scheduled appointments. We'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things to report tonight. I was happy to be informed by Senator Fatman and Representative Fernandez that the legislature successfully overrode the governor's veto of the line item veto for $50,000 for improvements to Fino Field here in Milford. I want to thank both Senator Fatman and Representative Fernandez and their staffs for their efforts and support in this matter. One other item, Algonquin Gas has informed us that they have started a project, which they're calling the Access Northeast Project. They are evaluating proposals to modify and expand its existing interstate natural gas pipeline system to increase energy supply diversity, security, and reliability in the Northeast. The proposed project, as I said, is called the Access Northeast Project. The project will make additional supplies of natural gas, power generators and natural The project will make additional supplies of natural gas, power generators and natural gas, excuse me, natural gas, expand and improve pipeline transportation facilities necessary to support the needs of regional power generators and natural gas customers. Right now, project representatives are beginning to collect and evaluate information necessary to determine the path of the new pipeline facilities with the least overall impact while balancing constructability concerns. A project introduction letter will be mailed to landowners in the vicinity of the project. Town council and I did meet with project representatives to discuss the project. No permits have been filed to date. The anticipated in-service date is November of 2018. I will keep the board advised as the project progresses. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Questions, Bill?
Just as it relates to the gas pipeline and specifically the permits, maybe there's something, granted, it's not until 2018, but maybe the board could get some education on that permitting process. I can imagine it's heavily, the state is heavily involved, but just so you give us some primer on it.
Sure.
Be helpful. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Will?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
And, yeah, on the gas pipeline, also some sort of idea where we're talking about?
Sure.
There's a map as part of the preliminary proposal. Okay, moving on to all business, we have a technology update. Rick, you provided a memo to all of us, do you want to summarize that?
Just basically, taking the lead from the last meeting. Obviously, there was discussion on two things, one being the structure of the IT department, and two being the process by which we would select an IT director for, we're talking now general government. What I did is just tried to put some information together that just would show the board, should they decide to have the IT director report directly to the finance director. Two things, one, the personnel that could be included, and two, basically the organizational structure as to how it would look, should you decide to do that. So it's more informational for the board. I wanted to just put that out there for you. Obviously, I think when we would hire an IT director, he or she, I think would get involved in support personnel as far as recommendations, et cetera, as to what type of personnel, how many job responsibilities, those types of things. So again, more informational than anything else.
Okay, so we're talking about an IT director, you've got a proposed organizational chart, selectmen, town administrator, finance director, IT director, network administrator, tech, and then you have an outline of process to hire an IT director. Selection committee to be comprised of five individuals, three of whom to have current positions in the technology field. Job description to be revised to include designing, developing, and implementing an overall town IT plan excluding schools. Director is also responsible for managing an IT staff, as well as outside consulting firms when necessary, and overseeing special IT projects. Talking about a timeframe for the hiring process, advertising in the Beacon, the Daily News, the Town Crier. Salary range to be set, and then a selection committee to review applications, conduct preliminary interviews, submit at least three names for the position of the board of selectmen, selectmen interview candidates, and the selectmen appoint the successful candidate. What's the pleasure of the board? Bill?
This gets very close to exactly what I had requested. I think, I think it addresses a portion of the issue related to hiring process, and improvement in that hiring process, having people that are involved in current technology field, being, having IT professionals today. I think we missed some of that in the last go-around, in the last couple of go-arounds. We had well-meaning members of the community, but at the same time, I think this boosts our ability to screen, effectively screen. I don't know whether, why, you know, why I'd look for five, three of whom to have current positions in the technology field. I don't know why we need two non-technology, non-IT professionals involved. I would suggest that being, one, the hiring manager, and the others being in the technology field. The, the current or proposed organizational chart, having the finance director oversee IT is exactly what I had recommended from my learnings and talking with different people. I think Rick hits on the recommendation that I made in terms of separating that from, and being consultant to the school department, should they request. I think that addresses that concern, that we separate that, that activity. I think, in part, that organizational structure and the two managers, for lack of a better phrase, led to some of our existing weaknesses and some of our existing turnover problems. And specifically, some of the undermining that went on within the school department contributed to that as well. Didn't help, and certainly sabotaged that effort. So encouraging the school department to manage theirs is required by statute, and manage their budget is a direction that I'd agree with. I just want to make sure that... Yeah, the other piece was just engaging mass IT municipal efforts with our IT director. And having, once we look at this, I think what's going to need to happen is, I think if we engage three IT professionals externally, I think what it does is, I think what they're going to need to do is understand what our existing structure is. I think there's going to have to be some frank dialogue that's, where they go over what went well, what didn't go well, why we think that happened, and what we're changing in this structure going forward. Review of the current job description, review of salary is certainly something we need this group to do and make recommendations to this board. So I think you've captured a lot of it, I think it's there, so I would just have less IT, non-IT professionals involved and more IT professionals involved. I'd like to consider modifying that number, but it's a minor tweak to the existing proposal. That's what I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Will?
Yeah, I guess I can echo a lot of that. A lot of this was discussed at the last meeting. Yeah, I think at the same time, that whatever number we decide on, that can, that can move. Like I mentioned last week, there were two folks in town, both two very talented individuals in the field that I know reached out to me hoping to help and volunteer if they could. So whether that number takes us to four or five or whatever it is, I would think that if there are qualified people that want to help and volunteer, and we think they're going to be an asset, then I think we should, we should do that along with the, with the hiring manager. Rick, I do appreciate you setting this up, because in the end, whether the finance director is technically the hiring manager, he reports to you, and that's still your R contact from the board. So I think, and knowing all the other direct reports you have, I think this, and again, if Zach and, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if that's something eventually we'll get his opinion on or not, but I do think that's probably the way to go. And I guess this is a good start, I'm pleased.
All set?
Yeah.
Well, in terms of the concept, I agree that an IT director overseeing the municipal end of things is probably the best way to go. I think the school committee would be best served by addressing their technology and IT needs independently. I think the schools' needs are a whole lot different than what the town might have, so, you know, I don't have any problem with that. I am a little bit alarmed to see that the IT director would answer to the director of finance and not the town administrator. We spent a considerable amount of time structuring this financial department, going back to November or December of last year, with fairly detailed plan, job descriptions, town meeting approval, subsequent submission to the state for legislation, and all to establish a finance director, basically to oversee the financial end of things. The tax collector, the town accountant's office, the treasurer's office, and the benefits administrator. You know, that's a big task, and, you know, we just heard from the auditor how successful things are at this point, but we are on the cusp of a restructuring, a consolidation, and the finance director has to really keep, you know, a rookie team in place. And to me, you know, I don't want anything diverting his attention from the financial aspect of the town. I don't see it anywhere in the job description that we've gone through, that he deals with technology. So I'm not comfortable with the finance director overseeing the IT director. I think it ought to be a basic framework that the IT director reports to the town administrator that then reports to this board. Otherwise, I think we're on the same page in terms of the structure of the department. Whatever support staff the IT person needs, I don't think that's an issue. In terms of the hiring practice, you know, if you look back at the last few appointments that we had, there were outside independent technology people involved in a screening committee, and they did make recommendations to this board. So, I mean, I think that's fine, and if you want to go forward on that basis, that's okay. I'm assuming the other two individuals are targeted to be the town administrator and the finance director? Is that what you're thinking, Rick, in your proposal?
That's what Zach and I discussed, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, that's, that's fine, and, you know, you obviously need somebody with municipal experience, the wherewithal of how things, you know, run in this town, what's needed, what's been done. And, you know, technology people, that's, that's fine. But to be honest, I mean, the technology aspect per se is really one aspect of the job. Another larger aspect is dealing with the various municipal departments, dealing with people and identifying needs. So that's my thought right now on, on the topic. Toss it out, any further conversation, or if you're ready to make a motion? But, you know, I do think it's imperative, whatever direction we go, for this board, I think, to take action tonight, because we've talked about it a long time, and, you know, I think for the most part, we're all pretty much on the same page, and I think it really behooves us to move forward.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I tried to outline in the last meeting why I thought the direction of the day-to-day activities would be better suited being moved to the finance. And I think it's very similar to models that exist, both at the state level and in private sector. And there's some benefits to that. You know, I think, I also don't want to make light of the town administrator's role. We talk about Zach's role and how important it is, and the number of departments he oversees. When we look at, when we look at town administrators' responsibilities as it relates to legal, engineering, planning, finance, the inspections, building inspections department, there's certainly a lot on a lot of people's plates. I think this actually balances it better, and it seems to make some sense. So, you know, I would, I would be willing to make a motion, as I was frankly last week, to move forward with this, with this structure, letting the school department know our direction, making sure they understand that direction. I don't want to be them to think that we're not communicating. I've had discussions with the superintendent of schools, I've had discussions with Zach, Rick, folks from Worldban, a couple of school committee members. So in fact-finding, I tried to address where I thought the weaknesses and the gaps were. I think it's important to do that before we move forward, and I'm comfortable this is the right direction. So I guess from my standpoint, I'd be prepared to make a motion to update the hiring process, to, I'm going to modify it slightly, have...
I think we might need to have a couple of motions.
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me break this up. Hiring process where I'm okay with five people, I just want it to be hiring manager and IT professionals. I think it's, it's important to do that. I think that's where our weakness was before, having more non-IT professionals involved in the interview process doesn't necessarily add value. I'd, that's, that's a motion I'd be prepared to make now.
Okay, so let's just get it, I think we need to break it down.
Okay, let's do that.
Because again, as I kind of digested this before, I think we have a hiring process, and then maybe a structure going forward, so just so Gene doesn't get all upset. So basically, your motion would be what to...
Five people, including the hiring manager, the other four people being IT professionals. I have some names of people who have volunteered, I want to provide those names. It sounds like other members on the board have names of people who have called in, reading this in the press so much. So I think, please be considerate of those people that have volunteered and that are offering to be helpful in the process.
And who would be selecting those three people?
I personally, I think the board should appoint them if they've, if they've recommended, or if they've offered to help, and if they've offered to help to this board, I'm comfortable giving those names of IT professionals to the hiring team.
No, no, what if we have five names, do you know what I mean? I mean, how are they going to decide, how, we're going to, we decide that?
I think we should decide it.
Okay, all right, yep. So it'd be a committee of up to five individuals, three of whom will have technology experience, to be appointed by this board?
No, it's actually four of whom to have technology experience, direct IT professional experience, and the hiring manager, which would be the director of finance.
Okay, so you're talking...
It's just a separate motion, so...
Okay, so you're talking about a selection committee to consist of the finance director and four individuals appointed by this board who have a technology experience, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, two in favor, one opposed?
Okay.
Okay, is there a second motion?
Yeah, I think...
You have the committee in place now to select the technology person?
Now, with respect to reorganization and looking at the proposed organizational chart, that's exactly consistent with our discussion or my recommendations last week, so I would reorganize the position of IT director and have this person report direct. The motion is to have this person directly report to the director of finance.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that with discussion. Last meeting, I had asked about the number of direct reports. I know Bill just talking a couple of minutes ago, went through the number of departments. So according to this chart, Rick, Zach would, with the IT director, that would bring him up to five direct reports.
Which chart are you talking about, this one?
The one that...
The one that's got the highlight on it.
The proposed organizational chart.
Okay.
And that's what I had asked last week, that I certainly don't have a problem with the IT director reporting to the finance director, especially obviously if he is the hiring manager, because that brings the total up to five. So I think that even though the finance director is still, again, still reporting to the town administrator, and that is our single point of contact from the board, but I don't think five, I don't think five direct reports is going to be something that Zach isn't going to be able to do. I think it's an added responsibility, and it's a big responsibility, but so is everything else that he does, so... So I just wanted to explain why I'm comfortable with him having a fifth direct report. Rick has quite a few more than that, including the finance director. So I think in the end, this is also good for Zach, but I also think it's, it should be a help to, to the town administrator as well.
Well, in my perspective, it's not just an issue of quantity, it's an issue of quality as well. But I think if you're going to go down that road, then I think the additional contemplation needs to be a rewrite of the finance director's job description, because there's now some new duties that obviously are going to come along with this, but...
I do agree with that.
A motion is on the table, which has been seconded to have the IT director report directly to the finance director. Is any further discussion? If not, all in favor, two in favor, one opposed. Do any other motions, you think? You've got the department structure in place, you've got a committee in place...
And the only other thing is, I think, you know, I don't want to always assume that members of the community or members of the school community are always watching these meetings. I think it's important to then structure a response to the school committee, explaining the differences in this IT structure that will be dealing with general government, and that the school department, in its effort... the school department is in, in its effort to go exclusively subcontracted is, you know, is respected by this board and appreciated, but I just want to make sure that they get a memo that outlines exactly the direction we're going and kind of address that once and for all, that this is a general government IT position. And there's a lot to do there, Zach, and I'd like to get your impression of...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you mind if I speak to that?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I've actually been working with Rick for about a couple of months now on getting involved in IT. Obviously, it's been an extremely hot topic. Our collective motivation is to get this done proper. We want to get this done right, we want to stop dragging our feet, want to get a proper model put together. I do think this is a proper model. You look at a lot of structures that do have a finance director, IT does fall beneath them quite often, not all the time. One thing I try making clear to as many people I talk to is, there's no universal structure that you see in any given town. It's, it's very much unique, a lot of different cases. You have separation, a lot of different cases, you have a hybrid model, you have employees, and you, you also have outsourcing. You see a lot of public safety that is separate. So my point is that there's no universal model, and what we're trying to do here is what's proper for Milford, and I, I do think that this separation's going to be the proper, the proper thing to do. To Bill's point, I already, earlier, had talked with Dr. Tremblay, and tomorrow morning, we're going to set up a meeting and discuss the results of a separation here, what it means for the budget, what it's going to mean for moving forward, what it may mean for additional appropriations, and I think Rick's been great with supporting me along the way, me supporting him. I think we make a great team here, and we're going to get this, this done right.
I think no less of, I would think no less and expect that, you know, you're capable and demonstrated that capability. You're right, when you benchmark some of the models, you see this, you see this done frequently. You also see, it's a frankly example of finance administration at the state level is also managing IT. So it's, it's, it's not unique. I'm not going to always point to state models because not all the state models work.
Yeah.
But I, I see it in private industry as well. And in part, part of the reason why that works, because if anybody's not playing ball, they understand that the person who's managing it also has responsibility for finance and budget. And that's enormously helpful in, in making sure that we set the right vision, set the right path, collaborate with customers, but at the same time, make decisions and move forward, and I think that helps.
Right. There's no denying that this is a tremendous responsibility, and I understand Chairman Murray's point. I do have a rookie team here that I am managing and that should be my main priority, and I need to have my focus there and get that done right. But technology comes hand in hand with making this successful. Most of the town government side of technology is programs that I need to have effective, efficient, and up and running, such as Budget Sense for Accounting, the Collector with Zobrio, formerly known as Data National, the Assessors with Patriot Property, and then the end users, they, they need to be up and running, we need to be secure, we need to protect against cyber attacks. We've got a lot of sensitive material out there that we need to have as a number one priority to protect, and I do think it can all come hand in hand. And again, we want to get this done right and move forward and put it to rest.
It just strikes me as curious that, you know, you put so much time and, and effort and detail in your proposal in December of last year for the finance department and the various components of that finance department and what you considered important and unimportant, and there's no mention at all of any IT technical oversight in, in that position. No, no, no mention at all in that.
Mr. Chairman, at the time, okay.
Let me just, let me just finish here. And, you know, I understand, you know, that that was, you know, thought provoking, it took a number of different steps to, to, to gain approval, and now, you know, in the, in, in, in the whisk of, of a week, all of a sudden, that's out the window, and now you have a totally new focus. So I, I wish you the best, and, you know, the financial situation to me is first and foremost.
I agree.
Don't let that slip.
I will not.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Any other old business? Bill?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just wanted to, to add to, I'm hoping that, and I'll direct it obviously through you, that whether it's Zach or it is him and this committee that, you know, through the hiring process, is also going to be, not just cognizant of, but actually maybe provide us or through the town administrator with exactly what, you know, not only what the IT director's going to do, because we vote, or at least I have over the last couple of years, about a vision, a plan, a this, that, and the other thing, but also how Worldban is going to be part of the team and how we go, what their responsibilities are, what, even going forward, we know what they are now, but what going forward? Because I think in the past, it's been, okay, we have this person in place, so they've kind of either gone away or doing projects, something like that, and what it proves is that they are a part of the team. So I would like to at least know how that's going to fit in, in the future as well, how outsourcing is going to play, you know, maybe a more specific role, like we've been notified now in the, excuse me, in the, in the meantime, through this transition period, what the role is. But I would just like also to know, if possible, how we go forward with that, and I think that's also a big component.
I think, I think both, both of you with, with this particular structure, you know, if, if, if I were on that end of the vote, I'd be looking, number one, for rewrite of the job description.
Well, that's my...
The duties and responsibilities, and then also what the new job description goes over. So I'm just concerned that that's implicit in this motion.
Absolutely. I agree, the actual, the second thing, the reason it was second is because you actually had brought it up. I do think through the town administrator, we should be adding on to those responsibilities, and quite honestly, I'm not one that likes to add work, especially at this responsibility, without compensation as well. So I think that's something that we should at least talk about. And Rick, I would, I would like the, the town administrator to have that conversation with, with the finance director because I think that's important, and I didn't think of that beforehand, but I think the, I think the additional job due should be in the, in the job description. I think that's only fair, only fair to our employees, and I would certainly want that on a personal level.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look forward to see that put together. Okay. New business? Bill, do you have any new business?
There was a piece of old business that I just wanted to redirect on a, on a different topic.
Okay.
And it specifically had to do with the quarry fill. And just some thoughts, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought up the, the potential for the fill. I think with this land being managed by the Conservation Commission, we should reach out to them as part of that process. I don't know that that was part of the whole discussion last week. We talked about engaging the state, but the, you know, the, the caretakers of this land are certainly the Conservation Commission.
I spoke with a representative from the state who's going to provide us with some written information to start, so obviously they, they can be included right from the beginning, and then if this board chooses to have a presentation, they would do that, and obviously we could invite them also.
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think some of the things we ought to investigate in this process, and I'm sure you didn't exclude it, is in the, in the process of filling, not filling, what's the ability to have wildlife areas, walking trail areas that are safer, all things that are possible within that sphere, you know, have families be able to go out there and walk on trails without worrying about falling off cliffs. But one of the things that's important to note, I think, is you couldn't propose a quarry today, and I think it's important that people know this, that, that you couldn't start a mining operation today without, end-of-life plan and a reclamation process to make it look as natural as it's, as you could at the end of that process. Money has to be put away to do that, they have to make sure that that company has a viable plan, and it's constantly reviewed. So what we have as a byproduct of a decade, I'm sorry, a century-old quarrying process is something you could not do today. It would have wildlife habitats, it would have trail capability, it would have a lot of things as part of that end-of-life plan and reclamation process. And I, and I think it's incumbent upon this, this board to work with the, to work with the Conservation Commission, who are the caretakers, to see what that might be. And I, I look at filling as a possibility, I look at actually a lot of things as a possibility. We discussed the liability, and what people may not be aware of, who are viewing the meeting tonight, may have viewed the last meeting, is since then, we've received what I think is a detailed report from town council, talking about what the liabilities are, that do care, and giving precedent cases, case law that, that's cited, that allows people to go back and look at that. So while we might have citizens that are worried about the potential loss of a swimming location, I think there's a tremendous benefit to some of the things that are being talked about in terms of walking trails and whatnot, and I think that's very important. I think this board's obviously sensitive to that, each of us in our own right supporting different activities related to trails. So, you know, I, I look forward to hearing what the potential opportunities are for that area. And I appreciate town council's feedback, is what I asked for last week, some guidance related to the liabilities, and he provided that. So I'm becoming educated on the process, and I think Conservation Commission can do a lot as they go to investigate what the opportunities are for that land, to communicate to the public and socialize the process and how to involve more people and involve more stakeholders. But I think we're going in the right direction. I'm not concerned at all, other than, you know, obviously, it's not our call, it's the Conservation Commission, we can help them in that process, but ultimately, I think it'll result in more trails, more wildlife habitat, and things that are also beneficial to the town that I think community members might be proud of whenever we're done.
Yeah, I mean, I just viewed it really at this point as kind of the information gathering phase. I mean, the request was put forth by the police chief. I think it's really important for us to honor that request if we expect them to be able to do the kind of job that we need the police to do, so I think that was clearly the right decision. And, you know, I just thought back to Representative Fernandez's memorandum and what was done in Tewksbury and Quincy, and let's, let's find out. Let's get some information and see what's possible, what's not, and then we can decide going forward. But it does surprise me, the rather dramatic reaction of, of some people over this, who were just trying to get some information to see what we might want to put forth or not put forth. Okay, any new business, Bill?
No new business, Mr. Chairman.
Will?
No, thank you.
We do have a request from WMRC to hang a banner over Main Street to promote the Seventh Annual Marathon to benefit the Oliva Fund. They're looking to do it, I believe, it looks like August 10th to the 24th. Motion?
Yeah, and I see that Tom has looked over the location of that banner, and I'm sure it looked over, is whether it's safe or not, so I'm comfortable with making this motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a letter of resignation from Brandon Vandel. Motion to accept. Motion made to accept.
Seconded.
Seconded, any more discussion? All in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. We have correspondence, well, just from the town engineer, her monthly report, which is always very informative and really kind of gives you a snapshot of what's going on in town. She's involved in so many different projects. I don't have any other items, we do not have an executive session tonight.
So with that, make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you and good night.